Okay.
Lady.
This is like.
Okay. We got it, we got it, we got it. We got it.
Okay, I just want to make sure. They said they were going to, because I said something about you.
We got it.
So I was thinking on the team, they said, no, we're gonna ask him.
Yeah, they did.
And then I want to make sure that.
Is it just us four?
Yeah, it's just us four.
Did the, have, when are, what's the deadline for them to submit?
They have submitted.
Oh.
Well, they have, yeah. So they're working on that.
Can I see those?
Yeah. Yeah, no, you said, would you rather wait for them to present it? Is that an issue with the? No, no.
I was just curious.
That's my brain. Twenty-four thousand.
Exciting to see.
Yep. I guess I don't need that.
I said I've stopped at a stop sign and waited for a green light. There wasn't even a light, so.
It is six thirty.
There we go.
We call for the roll, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yeah.
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Will you stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 3rd, 2023. Item B, adopt resolution number forty-nine twenty-three, approving the February 2023 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program Internal Audit Report. Item C, approve a contract with the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, doing businesses in Bark, to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for seniors over sixty years of age with fifteen thousand in matching funds from the city. Item D, grant an easement located in the northwest quadrant, section twenty-three, township ten north, Route three west to Oklahoma Gas and Electric, to provide service to the station expansion project. Item E, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three in the amount of two million nine hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Make a motion that we approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item three, consider approval of a lot split located in the northwest quadrant of section ten, township ten north, Route three west, being south of Northwest Twenty-seventh Street and west of I-35. Application by Jim Legree.
Vice Mayor and Council, this lot split is located in the Northmore Business Park. It is south of Northwest Twenty-seventh Street and west of I-35. It's actually just off of Shields. The business park is currently zoned I-1, is approximately ten acres in size. The applicant is requesting to split the vacant south end of the property from the larger business park. The new lot would be about two acres in size. City water is available to serve the site. Public sewer must be extended to serve the new parcel if approved. And the new lot would need to be platted prior to development, and stormwater detention is required. Because the two resulting lots are in conformance with the I-1 zoning district and the surrounding industrial developments, staff recommends approval of this application.
Is there an intention to develop this?
Yes, when I spoke with him, his intent is to construct buildings very similar to what the existing park is.
All right.
So there's no substantial change or change in use.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item four, consider authorizing the purchase of nineteen portable handheld radios and related accessories from L-Three Harris Technologies Incorporated in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents off state contract number SW one zero five three.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a state contract budgeted purchase. You have previously overseen a similar agenda item which you approved in the past for ten radios from Motorola. However, trying to be fiscally responsible, we did research and found a equally effective radio for a cheaper cost, which allowed us to get nineteen instead of ten for the same price. And so we would recommend approval. This will help us in maintaining the inventory of radios up to date.
That's awesome. Thank you, Chief Gibson.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider authorizing the purchase of thirty-four mobile vehicle-mounted radios and related accessories from L-Three Harris Technologies Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred dollars off state contract number SW one zero five three.
Again, Vice Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted state contract purchase. Recently, council approved purchase of new vehicles for the police department. These are the in-car radios that will actually go in the vehicles. We are also switching brands inside the vehicle as well. This will save us fifty-four thousand dollars over what we expected to spend. Recommend approval.
I'm just curious, have the cars come in? Are you able to start equipping them and getting them?
Yes, sir, the approximately twenty have come in.
Okay.
And they're coming out all the time, but none have been marked yet.
Okay.
And so we are waiting on this purchase here to put the radios in the car, and then we're waiting on the markings to go on the cars. The markings should start going on to the cars this week. And the vendor here assures us that we'll have, if we move on this item tonight, if it were to be approved tonight, we should have these radios within the next thirty days to go into the cars. It's a pretty easy swap to put them in the cars. And so we anticipate by the end of this month, at the latest end of next month, that we'll have these cars rolling out pretty steadily.
Okay, great. I'd make a motion that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item six, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of thirty-two Saffronland Bulletproof Vest off state contract number SW zero seven six four from Special Ops in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Fifty percent of this cost will be reimbursed using Department of Justice Patrick Lee, Lehee Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Funds to replace vests due to expiring in 2023.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is body armor for police officers that they wear every day. Body armor has a warranty life of five years, so we replace vests for officers every five years. This is the allotted number that is due for rotation this year, due for replacement this year. Again, it is a budgeted state contract purchase that will receive a fifty percent reimbursement from the federal government.
But is the fifty percent half of the thirty thousand, or is that half of the total amount?
I believe that's half of the total amount.
Okay, all right, thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Consider renewal of a contract with Pivot Incorporated in the amount of eighteen thousand for operation of a community intervention center to receive and hold juveniles who have been taken into custody by law enforcement agencies.
Vice Mayor and Council, Pivot is a resource that we've used at the police department for years now. It is a contract that has been renewed by council previously in the past, where when we have juveniles that we take into custody for either statutory offenses, or, or I mean, status offenses or statutory violations, we can drop them off and get officers back out on the street quicker. However, the other benefit to that is that Pivot provides family resources and resources for the children that come into that facility. It should be noted that Major Belling did an outstanding job. Pivot initially wanted this year's contract to be twenty-five thousand dollars. Generally, in the past, we paid fifteen, and so this is a modest increase over the years that we've been using Pivot, but it was negotiated down by Major Belling for the fiscal responsibility of the city.
Make a motion that we approve the item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Thank you, Chief Gibson. Item eight, consider approval of a sports association agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four Moore Youth Baseball Program held at Buck Thomas Park.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the annual agreement with the Moore Youth Baseball Association. I also want to say that it's an ongoing process, and we're continually working on issues to improve all aspects of the baseball program. So this will be for the 2023 baseball season.
Okay. So does this have, does this agreement, sorry, I can't pull it up on my iPad, have something in there regarding emergency exits and things like that that we're trying to improve?
We're, we are researching that now. We're researching new gates and new installation of the gates.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
No.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item nine, consider approval of an amendment to the agreement with Bethesda Incorporated funded with Community Development Block Grant Funds, adding intakes and individual counseling sessions to the previously approved group counseling sessions.
Vice Mayor and Council, the city entered into an agreement with Bethesda funded with CDBG funds in September of 2022. This agreement provides counseling for abused children. Bethesda has requested to amend their budget to include intakes and individual counseling sessions, as well as the group counseling that's already included. And these items are CDBG eligible and were included in their original funding application. Staff recommends approval.
So it was in the original application?
It was, yeah.
Okay, make a motion that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item ten, considering if deemed appropriate, authorized participation in the 2022 Global Opioid Settlements with CVS, Walmart, Walgreens, Allegra and Tiva, including agreeing to the terms of the global settlements, the release of the claims against these entities, and the permissible uses of the monies received pursuant to the settlements for opioid abatement, and designating the city manager Brooks Mitchell to sign the subdivision participation forms to finalize participating in these settlements.
Vice Mayor and Council, last fall, you might remember, August, September of last year, council approved and authorized participation in the nationwide opioid settlements against the three largest distributors. In late 2022, agreements were announced with these three pharmacy chains, CVS, Walmart and Walgreens, as well as the two manufacturers, Allergan and Tiva, as a continuation of this prior settlement that occurred last fall. Today, with council approval, this will allow us to participate in these additional settlements for the purpose of opioid abatement in our community. We would recommend approval and authorizing participation with these settlements.
Make a motion to approve.
Does this have an effect on our relationship from a city perspective? Or is this more on a personal level, or?
It's be on a, on a city perspective.
City perspective, okay.
The funds that we receive will be, be able to be distributed on a city basis. Maybe for law enforcement, that's worth it.
Okay, all right, second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item eleven is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held April 3rd, 2023. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and four dollars and seventy-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. We'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item twelve is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held April 3rd, 2023. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty through two to twenty-three in the amount of a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Would you call for the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie. Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Item fourteen is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting held March twentieth, 2023. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. It's consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, at this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, let the reflect, let the record reflect that all members are still present. Item fifteen is new business. We have a few people sign up to speak, and I'm gonna go through these. And as you come up, could you please state your name, address? And there's a five-minute time limit per citizen. So thank you guys for showing up tonight. Brian Overling.
I'm Brian Overling. Live at twenty-seven thirty-two Southeast Thirty-Eighth Street. Here in Moore. I'm here with, actually, the president of our HOA. Concerned with the construction that's coming through Cedar Farms. I actually bought art, but I don't know if you'll be able to see it. We have, OGN E had come through. OGN E's come through and dug this up and hasn't resawed it.
Okay, you see it, Melissa? There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the city of Moore is putting in the deep pump line from Indian Hills through to the, the old pump station, which is going to go through our common area. As they came through and put in a dirt barrier, they've torn up our sprinkler lines. And we want to make sure that the city will repair that once it's all done. We've talked to the contractor, and he says, I don't think it's in my contract. I'm not gonna actually, you know, wanna take that as, as gospel.
Right.
But we want some assurance that whatever they've done, they will repair. We have a lot of, a lot of fescue grass that has to be watered, and.
And this is in the common area?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I imagine the fescue needs water pretty quick.
It, it does, and, and right now, we're able to water. But once they actually start digging a twenty-foot-deep, fifteen-foot-wide trench, you know, they're using big equipment, so we just think that they're going to literally destroy more of the, more of the stuff. Now, there's, there's talk about they're gonna bore under the street. If they just bore further, then they won't have to disrupt the lines. We can get them repaired and stay, stay watered. We, we need help with this.
I think Jerry would like to speak.
I had, Vice Mayor and Council, I had sent an email to Charles. And essentially, with the sodding, I talked to ONG, and they said that they were gonna get it scheduled, and that they would come in and get sod put in, and hopefully, they said, in the next week or so. I can't guarantee that, but that's what they responded with. And then, as, as it relates to the contractor, I had forwarded their, their issue to the contractor, and he did send back an email indicating that he thought that that was not his responsibility. And we responded back with the information in the parts of the specifications that indicated that, yes, he is responsible for that. We do have a construction meeting tomorrow, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, and we'll cover that issue and to, you know, confirm that, yes, he is responsible for making sure that if he's caused any damage to any sprinkler system or anything of that nature, that he's responsible for that. And I feel confident that we'll get that worked out on Wednesday, and I'll get back with you on, on that after the meeting.
And would you, Jerry, would you mind just sending us an email about the outcome of that meeting, the construction meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
What their response is to that.
Yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, it needs, everything needs to be put back the way that it was when they started, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Overling, feel free to follow up with us with any issues you experience. We'll give them the chance to, to fix it, and we'll be back the first week of May if you experience too many issues.
And where, where's that at, again?
Cedar Farms is just south of Thirty-Fourth Street, between Indian Hills, basically, and Thirty-Fourth Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
What's the north-south streets?
Sunny Lane.
Sunny Lane, okay, all right, thank you.
That brings up a good point about ONG. I mean, they've been in my neighborhood as well. I mean, and it's been torn up for months and months. And they've, they've gone back and putting some sod, put some sod down. The other day, when I was, when I was, I was thinking, if it was my yard, it would not be acceptable. I mean, they've, they've got trenches that kind of throw some dirt over top of it and slap that sod down. And I mean, it's, it's not okay.
So there's no filling in ruts or settling of the?
Yeah, not in the parts that I saw, so.
We'll look into it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Let's see here. We have Charles, please state your name and address for the record, please. And just a reminder, five minutes for, for all citizens.
My name is Charles Ladick. Live at twenty-six oh five Southeast Thirty-Ninth Street in Cedar Farms. And I'm the president of the homeowners' association. A job I didn't want, I hate doing.
Thank you for volunteering and doing it.
People think you're making a million dollars a year at it. But I feel like I try to do the best I can, along with Brian. He's the vice president. And I've been in contact with Mr. Eiler. I called him last year at some time, because ONG done some work, and they didn't put any sod over it, didn't put any sod over it, and he got it done for us. The, the other day, after I talked to the contractor, the ONG guy was there, and he said, well, we didn't, we didn't do that work. And I said, well, I think you did. And so I'm, I'm hoping that what you're saying, that he is taking care of it, because if he doesn't, I will be getting in contact with you again. And, and, you know, they, whenever they, the other issue is, is we're trying to keep our neighborhood informed on what's going on, because it's gonna be a major disruption through there. They've, they, the contractor, I spoke to the contractor the other day, and he was supposed to set up a, a meeting with Mr. Eiler and myself and Brian. And it's gonna be Wednesday. Do you know what time, Mr. Eiler?
I have a construction meeting with him on Wednesday, and we were gonna go through that issue. I sent him the information and the, and the copy of the specifications that indicate he is responsible. And he did send back a, a receipt to the thing.
Okay, do you know what time, because I?
Well, we do have, we have a regular construction meeting at, let me email it to you.
Okay.
It's at one-thirty or three o'clock.
Okay.
That one is at one-thirty.
Okay, okay, I've got a, I've got to give blood at ten-thirty that morning, so.
Yeah, it's at one-thirty Wednesday, and it is upstairs in the second floor.
Oh, it's gonna be here? It's not gonna be on the location?
Uh, let me verify.
I was assuming it was gonna be on the location. I talked.
We held those meetings over at the lift station.
Okay, okay, and maybe I'm, maybe, maybe I'm not invited. Which is fine with me, but, but I would kind of, I.
The, the meeting was, was a regular construction meeting. That is one of the items in the meeting that we're discussing, but one of many.
Okay.
You're certainly welcome to come.
Okay, all right, all right. And, and, you know, whenever they, whenever they set, put down that silt fence, they just ripped through it and ripped up lines and caused some, some adjacent problems. And, and we've got a contract with a sprinkler company, and they've come and, and, and done our, done our maintenance work and got them ready for the, for the summertime. But they've done some work on those ripped up lines, and who do we send the bill to? On that, on, on the ripped up lines? Because we started repairing them, and then the contractor, Mr. Eiler, had the contractor call me. And they, they said, well, you need to dispense with repairing those lines. So we've got some bills there. Do we go ahead and pay it as our homeowners' association? Or do we give the bill to them? How do we handle that?
I would suggest that you, you file a fine, and we will, if you want to submit to the city, they file another fine for that amount, and we will, we will defer it and pass it on with the governor.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you talking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep us posted if you have some issues, okay? Emily Midget. Again, please just state your name, address, and a five-minute time limit there.
My name is Emily Midget, and my address is one four four zero one South Anderson Road. I'm here because of the safety in the ballpark, in the baseball park at Buck Thomas Park. I've emailed all of you images of the gates that are locked. They say exit, emergency exit only, and they are locked. They are chained and locked. I told you the capacity of the ballpark roughly at the time. There was games on every field except two. There are ten fields in the park. The gates being labeled as emergency exits and chained and locked is misleading. It's negligent, it is dangerous. I have three small children. There is no way we would get out of that park safely.
Yeah.
Who is responsible for the safety of the patrons in the park? Is it NYBA? Is it the city of Moore? Nobody will answer me.
So, and somebody else can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, they're, the baseball association is leasing the fields.
Sure.
So ultimately, when they're holding the events, the baseball field is. However, we still need to, I mean, make sure that the baseball association is following the rules and making sure everybody is safe.
I spoke with NYBA about six weeks ago about giving them push to open exits, similar to the ones that are in the station water park right now. And they told me they couldn't install them without city approval. I spoke with Sue Wood, I emailed, and I spoke with her on the phone once about the gates, and I'm not getting anywhere. So that's why I'm here. There are two exits for the entire baseball park, one at the north end and one at the south end. There's three exits in this room we're standing in.
I appreciate you showing us, or, or, we didn't, weren't aware of the issue.
Oh, yeah, if you don't have kids that play ball.
And so we've emailed, you, maybe you weren't on those, but for sure, we've emailed back and forth, and individuals have contacted the city manager, and it's something that we're concerned with, with you. You know, I have a nephew out there with you, okay?
Yeah, so what do we do?
So I think that we'll work.
Well, we're, we're looking to see if we can install the, push things on the existing gates, or if we need to replace the gates. And so, I mean, one way or another, we'll have that issue fixed. So in the, in the meantime, even though a couple of the gates were locked over this past weekend, they're supposed to be unlocked, remain unlocked, so people can exit through those gates.
What do we do about that? They're locked.
Well, there's, that, well, we've, they'll be unlocked. We've had that, we've, yeah, we've.
Okay, so moving forward, if they are locked, who do I call?
If you call me, I'll call Brooks.
Yeah, let us know, is what I was about to say.
And you'll be there that Saturday to help us unlock the gates.
Get them unlocked, yeah.
Yep, we will.
Does the, does NYBA and the Ballpark Association, are they under the jurisdiction of the fire marshal, just like any other entity in the city? Is this correct?
Well, we're, we're also reviewing, the Fire Marshal's office is also reviewing a park capacity.
Sure.
And so we don't have that number for you tonight, but we've brought that to their attention. They are looking into it.
And whenever there's a emergency response, like a, say, a heart attack in the ballpark, and the gates are locked, what happens then?
Well, the gates shouldn't be locked.
Right.
This is a real situation, yeah.
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 That's the first thing that's gonna get solved, is we're gonna unlock the gates.
Right.
Okay, so moving forward this weekend, when my sons are playing baseball, the gates will be unlocked.
Yes.
Okay.
And if they're not.
I call you.
Call any of us.
Any of us, yeah.
Or just call me directly, so they'll, they'll call me, so.[1683.41]
Okay.
Yep.
Because we'll call Brooks and say, why weren't those unlocked?
Yeah, so I need everybody's cell phone numbers before Saturday.
Yep.
They're public. You can Google them pretty easy, yeah.
I see mine's on.
Six-one-three, sixty-two-hundred. And the rest, everybody's on our, the city's webpage, you can go there and look them up.
Yep, that's my cell phone's on there, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. There are no other citizens sign up to speak? Would anybody like to speak? Item B is for items for the city council and trustees.
I just saw the Moore Police Department have posted on their webpage about a couple of thieves that they had apprehended, and that's always great to see that. So often, it seems like those people don't get caught, but they did, and so I'm sure to appreciate Moore PD and their work.
Yes, very much.
Absolutely.
Item C, items from the city trust manager.
Just budget meetings start later this week with the council members.
Item sixteen is executive section. Section three-zero-seven, titled Twenty-five Oklahoma Statutes, permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. Is the opinion, opinion of the city attorney and the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, consider approval of the fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-four contract between the city of Moore and the Fraternal Order of Police. Lodge one-thirty-one is authorized by Twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three-zero-seven B-two. Item B, discuss and consider if deemed appropriate to take action regarding pending claim by Eric Perro against the city of Moore and authorize legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore, as authorized by Twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three-zero-seven B-four.
Make a motion, we convene to executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, we'll convene to executive session.
Thank you.
Oh, you know what? Things are always kind of crazy right here, too, so sometimes they do one thing and sometimes they do another, so you just have to do with whatever they do. I'm going to have to redo your paper. Gave it with a more urban renewal authority seal.
All right, item D is reconvene from executive session.
I'll figure it out.
Is item E?
So I think you just have to say, like, please make note that everybody's...
Please note that the same council members are still present. Item E?
Um, okay, so, no, we go A, right, because?
Well, no, we...
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the contract between the city of Moore and the Fraternal Order of Police.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We, did we vote on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we call for them to vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes.
Item B, I'll make a motion to approve the settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item seventeen is adjournment.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes.